Good evening and welcome. This is the January 13th, 2025 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through their doors to your right, proceed to the right, and down the stairs. If the hallway is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall, and down the stairs. Do not use the elevator, and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we do ask everyone, please silence your cell phones. We do recognize that change, of course, can be challenging, and we appreciate your patience as we work to enhance the public comments process. To ensure a more efficient and inclusive experience, we are amending the public comment time to three minutes per speaker for both the work session and legislative session. Additionally, we will be gradually implementing an online sign-up option, the online sign-up option, to help manage time effectively and ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak. Please note that in-person sign-ups will still be available during this meeting, so at any time, you may grab a form and give it to City Clerk Julie English. Thank you for understanding and cooperation as we make these improvements. This time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will invite Reverend David Micho from St. Peter's Episcopal Church to give the city invocation. Thank you, Reverend Micho.
Thank you very much. I'm honored to be giving the invocation from St. Peter's, which is just a block away. We've been celebrating and worshiping here in downtown Salisbury for over 250 years since 1768. Let's start with a prayer for our country. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties in fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. And do with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law, we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness; in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail, all of which we ask in God's name. Amen. And now for a prayer for our local government. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Salisbury the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Micho. We're going to pivot past the first item in the proclamation presentation, and we will come back in a moment. County Executive is running just a few moments behind schedule. We will start with an annexation introduction for 1501 Pemberton Drive and invite City Planner Amanda Rodriguez. I'm going to pass the torch off to Council Vice President Anja Blake, since this does involve and personally involves the principal at my employer. Councilwoman.
Hello, hello, hello. Welcome.
Thank you. All right.
Go ahead.
So this is your initial introduction. This is for an annexation at 1501 Pemberton Drive. The site is comprised of a parcel located on the northerly side of Pemberton Drive and totals 1.12 acres in area. The site is located within the R8 Residential Zoning District of Wycomico County, and the applicant has requested that the parcels be designated R8 Residential upon annexation, which is a comparable zoning classification. Currently, a single-family dwelling exists on the property, and upon annexation, the applicant intends to subdivide the property into two parcels and construct a single-family dwelling on the unimproved lot. In addition, for your consideration, the applicant has also requested that the council grant full participation in the city's Here Is Home incentive, despite missing several milestones, as the original annexation request and Here Is Home supplemental and approval occurred in 2022. And I can answer any questions you may have.
City council members with questions? I have, I have one. Talking about the milestones, what, let's talk about those. How many, I mean, it sounds like it's been significant miss on a few things there.
So this, this annexation with all of the staff turnover had actually sat aside and should have been proceeding, but there were some heckups there along the way. The first milestone was having the agreement signed and dated by, I think it was the end of February in 2021, and that was complete at that time. I've included in the packet the initial approval letter for you from the Director of DID at that time. The second milestone was obtaining certain approvals, including obtaining the building permit, and then the third milestone is your completion of the project. And so the first two, for a single family, have passed, but they did have that signed agreement by the correct date. They just haven't gotten the building permit because there's a discrepancy there as well because, because they are still located within the county, they're required to get a county building permit because they're the jurisdiction in charge. But if the annexation had been progressing appropriately, they would have in turn had to get a city building permit.
Thank you.
I have a question. 1505 Pemberton Drive and being annexed, that would be in my district. Okay. Approximately how many dwellings are they planning to put there?
Just one.
Just one?
Mm-hmm.
So is this, was this being owned or is this land being annexed due to private entity or?
Right now, no, it's, it's the landowner that owns the other parcel is building another dwelling on the lot.
That's just what I.
He would re-subdivide.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a consensus from the council to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez, if you want to just, want to just stay right there?
Yeah.
We can continue forward. Yep, we have a couple other resolutions. So the next proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury for certain area of land contiguous and binding upon the corporate limits of city of Salisbury, known as Pine Way, Pohanka Kia Annexation. So you want to move forward with that one?
Sure. This is not your initial introduction. You've already seen this one. So this is a site that is comprised of two parcels located on the easterly side of Route 13 and the northerly side of Pine Way and totals 2.95 plus or minus acres. The site is located within the C2 General Commercial Zoning District of Wycomico County, and the applicant requested the parcels be designated as general commercial upon annexation. Planning Commission reviewed this and forwarded a favorable recommendation to have the property zoned general commercial in December 2021. This is another one we're just catching up on, obviously. So if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer those.
Ms. Rodriguez, I remember I asked at Planning Commission, can you just rephrase, remind the council and in the public the reason for this request? I remember there was something specific about that they weren't planning to do, you know, XYZ, that this was, was it some housekeeping or some cleanup?
Yeah, this one's a little bit of a housekeeping. This one, originally, it changed ownership. At the time when the annexation was applied for, it was Safford Kia, but now under the ownership of Pohanka, they have a different layout and plan for their lots that are contiguous to one another.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? No? All right, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, next, we will move forward to a resolution proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury, a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, to be known as City of Salisbury Waste Water Treatment Plant Annexation.
Sure. So this one is currently owned by the city and is contiguous with the existing wastewater treatment plant, and it's located southeast of Pemberton Drive. The area totals 5.96 acres and is currently mostly unimproved, with the exception of two storage sheds we have on site. It serves as a storage and staging area for the city treatment plant, and we continue to and intend to use the same use of the property. It is to be zoned industrial upon annexation, per recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission made in September of this year, and impacts on the surrounding neighborhood as well as the city's infrastructure have deemed to be minimal. So I'll answer any questions on that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Counsel, any questions about this one?
No.
Great. Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Just pause, just a few moments to wait for, and there we are. So we will, we'll bring up the County Executive Julie Giordano for our proclamation presentation. Welcome, Ms. Giordano.
My son was playing JV basketball, so that in itself is torturous enough. Anyway, I wanted to come forward because I, we have a lot of thank yous to give out, and one of them is to the Salisbury City Fire Department. And I wanted to share this really quickly with you, because I know you probably have a lot to get through tonight, so I don't want to take up too much of your time. On December 10th, 2024, so just a little over four weeks ago, my husband was at the gym, at Main Street Gym, and my husband's 51 years old and had lost 50 pounds and knew that there was a heart condition in his family, and tried to eat healthy and did all these things. And that night, on December 10th, I got a phone call that he had collapsed at the gym, and we didn't really know what was going on. I just got a call that he's at the hospital and I needed to get there. To save you all the details, my husband suffered a massive heart attack. I now know what a widow maker heart attack is, and he also went into cardiac arrest. So he had a 6% chance of survival, and he just called me and told me he's on his way home from work. So, and I've been going, we've been going around the county. We gave a thank you proclamation to Main Street Gym. Main Street Gym performed CPR on my husband. He was without a pulse for 10 minutes, and they provided, or they did CPR on him until Delmar Fire Department got there, and then right behind them was the City of Salisbury Fire Department. They, I, I know my husband would not be here today if it was not for these people. And so I am going around. He wanted to be here, but of course he had to work late, so we see where his priorities are. But it's good to know he's back, so that's good. But anyway, we are going around. We gave a proclamation, like I said, to Main Street. We gave one to Carrie Zinneman, who was the dispatcher who walked them through CPR to make sure they were keeping up with everything. And we are now going on to the Salisbury Fire Department, so we are hereby giving you the Heart Saver Award. Now, this is something that you guys probably should get every single day, but apparently when it's the county executive's husband, you get one with a seal on it, so it's official now. I also want to say too, your chief reached out to me probably 20 times to make sure everything was going okay. So it wasn't just about that night. It was, they were checking on me and checking on us. So presented with deepest appreciation by the county executive, Julie Giordano, to the Salisbury Fire Department in recognition of your heroic and life-saving efforts. When my husband suffered a massive heart attack and cardiac arrest, your swift response, expertise, and dedication made all the difference in a critical moment. While answering the call to serve is your mission, your actions that day went far beyond duty, demonstrating unparalleled professionalism, courage, and compassion. My family and I will forever be grateful for your service, and our community is blessed to have such an exceptional team of first responders protecting us. You are true heroes, so thank you for everything that you did. On a lighter note, really quick, my husband and I do have a dark sense of humor, and so I did yell at him and tell him how much this costed the county for all the people that were there working on him. So I'm sure I'll get the bill for that later on, so, no, I'm just teasing, so. Anyway, thank you, guys. So I'm going to come over and give this to you.
Absolutely. Yeah, and Council President, we invited the responding team who was on the ambulance to be there, so if we want to take a picture and chief and Chris Stewart, so.
Please. It was your shift, Derek. Thank you.
Hey, turn and look at me.
I did your leash. Anyway, guys, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Now I'll let you guys get back to the really exciting.
Thank you, County Executive. And I think she said it best, again, they, they got the biggest thank you, but again, it's, it's good that her husband gets to go home, and you can see that was a quick recovery, so we thank all the parties that made it happen for, for him. All right, moving forward to, we'll move to Deputy Director of Field Operations, Sam Ireland, for an FY 2025 general fund budget and FY 2024 water sewer fund budget appropriation, appropriate, appropriate additional funds. Mr. Ireland?
Field Operations, Water Works, and HCDD sold or auctioned the equipment listed in your packet on government auction sites, and now we're requesting the surplus funds received for the equipment be deposited into the respective accounts listed for each department. There is a mistake listed in the packet below. It's for the Water and Sewer Fund. I'm just going to circle back with the city clerk once I have time and amend that, but it's just numbers.
You, I'm sorry, we use the?
So the Water and Sewer Fund, it's listed as 01000469200, and it should be a different account.
Okay, gotcha.
Sorry.
Ms. English, I'm sure we'll make that, make sure that's correct. Okay, perfect. All right, counsel, any questions about this budget amendment?
No.
No? All right, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, we will circle back to the Fire Department and bring Chief Rob Franston up for a budget amendment authorizing the mayor to enter to a contract with the Maryland Institute of Emergency Medical Services Systems.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
So the first thing I have before you tonight is a grant that the departments received for $4,000 from the, from MEMS, the Maryland Institute of Emergency Medical Services System from the state. It's a 50-50 matching grant. This $4,000 will be paired with $4,000 of city funds to allow us to purchase five AEDs. Our AEDs are due for replacement and are part of our CIP this year. There's over 30 in there, so this will take care of five of those. So it is a matching grant. We do have the money in one of our budgeted accounts to cover the other half of it.
Yeah, listen, I, I think that's a, yeah, that's really, that's really good. Counsel, any questions about that?
None.
Whatever you need. All we can do.
We have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. All right, chief, next.
Okay. The next grant is a substantial grant from, again, from the state of Maryland. It's from the Office of Overdose Response. This grants an amount of $542,000. This grant will be used to pay for salaries, supplies, medications, and software related to opioid usage. That's going to be provided by our SWIFT and MDCN teams. So what this money will be used for will be to expand the services that were provided by SWIFT with regards to opioid response, so nights and weekends of having somebody on call in that pretty purple car that you see riding around town that says one pill can kill. In addition to that, it will allow us to purchase supplies and perform community outreach throughout the community. It is a reimbursement grant, and it's over the course of two years, so it's up to the $542,000. We don't have to spend it all, but we will do our best to get our message out there, and there's no match required from the city for that.
Wonderful.
It is, yes. Counsel, any questions?
No.
We have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief, next.
The last thing is the Fire Department received another grant from the Rural Maryland Council's Prosperity Investment Fund in the amount of $13,791. This grant is specifically marked for the purchase of an iStat blood laboratory analyzer. So what this device will be used by, again, by our SWIFT and MDCN team that's out there, so when they're making their home visits, they'll be able to draw blood and get instantaneous lab results right in the home instead of having to take the blood to the hospital or the lab back to do that. So then they'll be able to make the immediate determination of whether or not the patient needs transport, or if they can follow up or refer them to a different, you know, allied agency for healthcare. So this grant will pay for the cost of one of those devices, and there's no match.
Very nice.
Good. Counsel, any questions?
Yes, 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 yes.
All right, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, all right, thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
All right, and we'll pivot to our Housing and Community Development Director, Mirbota, for a budget amendment to accept a donation from Draper Holdings Charitable Foundation for the Santa Workshop Program.
Good evening, counsel. What we've got tonight is a, once again, Draper Holdings has made a financial contribution for, from their Blessed Child program. We're a check for $1,000 for the Santa's Workshop. It was a very busy event this year. We had over 185 cars, over 430 gifts, and books were given to children, over 400 books. So I also would like to recognize Toys for Tots and Cloverland Dairy, they donated, Cloverland Dairy donated to milk, and so this $1,000 that we put it in a multi-year fund account helps us to enhance the experience, purchase any, any gaps and gifts that we need, and allow Santa and his elves to continue and work for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Bota. That was definitely a very busy but exciting event. I was, I was watching the cars go by. Counsel, any questions?
None.
No? We have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. Again, thank you, Mr. Bota. All right, and we'll pivot to Chief Mineshine for an ordinance to accept grant funds from the U.S. Department of Justice. Chief?
Thank you.
Yes.
Evening, everybody. Thank you, Council President. So this is actually a two parts. We had a 23 Bureau of Justice Memorial Grant. We actually received slightly more money than we anticipated, so I'm actually here just to accept the difference. If you would be willing, accept the difference in this grant, $2,998. The 25150 was already accepted previously by council. The second part of this is to authorize the mayor and myself to sign an MOU. This will be the 2020 Fair Bureau for Justice grant the following year. Acceptance of, to be able to sign the MOU, the amount of $27,410 appears on the Schedule C, so has already been authorized to be accepted.
Thank you, chief. Counsel, any questions?
None.
All right, we have consensus to move those items forward?
Yes.
Great, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, we'll pivot to our attorney, Ashley Boucher, for a resolution amending the city council regulations and rules of order.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This has been a discussion item for some time. It's probably going on about a year at this point. To amend and update our rules of order consistent with what we were doing, and also just to bring it in line, since the last time it had been done has been a number of years ago, the city clerk and I, with consultation with Council President, has proposed rules for you all to discuss tonight, and that's included in your agenda packet. So at this point, if you have any questions or discussions, this is your opportunity to do so.
Ms. Boucher, and again, just to recap, and I think that is item pivot there for the public comment, again, recommending that we go to three minutes versus the two there. I know we've heard a lot of comment about that, and again, just, just to make sure it's uniform, so. But again, I welcome counsel's comments to make sure we are discussing those items.
Well, me, myself, the three minutes is adequate, and we want to give our constituents, I know we can't give you five minutes, six minutes, or whatever, but to give you three from two, I think is, is really adequate because we need to hear from you, and we need to give you efficient time to be able to speak. And I know for myself, I couldn't get it out in two minutes. So, you know, we're being fair. We want to be transparent. We talk about transparency, we need to be transparent, and this is a step towards being transparent, whether you think it's enough minutes to speak. All we ask is that when you come up, just have your, your little spiel in order, and, you know, I know some people will come up and they will probably repeat the same thing somebody else says. If that's what you're doing, then if you think that you're in, not in cahoots, but if you think you're saying the same thing, then there's no need to get up, or you can just get up and say, well, I, I agree with what the person before me has said, to give us that time, but I, I thought it would be fair for the three minutes. Like I said, I couldn't do two minutes myself. So that's the really only thing that I have to say at this time.
Our Council President, are we going through each section? The reason I'm asking that is because we just received this on Friday, and I went through it with a fine-tooth comb and brought up the one from 2014, and I'm thinking for my purposes, I had a copy of it, and it may have been helpful for the public to have had a copy of that as well, because the numbering, the 13 items that you have are not exactly in the same order as the ones from 2014. There are quite a few questions that I had and some things that were left out. I don't know whether to take the time now to do it, or how do you want me to progress on this?
Yes, we don't have to move this forward to legislation, for it to be, for it to be amended or adopted tonight, but we, I think this is the venue for us to discuss it. That way, we can direct the attorney and the clerk's office to be able to make the adjustments, and that way they can incorporate those and make sure that they're getting the full scope of what they want from council.
Okay, so do you want me to go? All right. Under the preamble, the first section, I think it would be helpful for the general public to know, even though they may know that we are elected for four years, that was taken out of the first, the 2014, and I don't know if we need to identify the simple majority, a number on that, as opposed to just simple majority, how many of the council members need to vote in order for that to be put in place. Next, the general provisions, that is a new segment, which I commend you and President Doudry and whomever you worked with. This took a lot of work, and I commend you. My only concern, I guess, is that the new version is putting a lot of responsibility on the president, and I think since there are five council members, we should all help shoulder some of these responsibilities, and I think it can be done so with just some change in wording. General provisions, do we need to add guidelines for presentation of appreciation certificates? That was in the previous one. That is not my call, it's just something I noticed. Under B, special open or closed meetings may be held at any time and place, and I think we should put in there, if requested by any council member and the council president, so therefore the onus falls on the entire council instead of just one person.
Can you back?
On B, under general provisions?
So before, when you were discussing the presentation?
Oh, yeah, just if you wanted to add that. I'm not sure, I think I'd rather hear somebody else's opinion on whether or not that should be, we should have some guidelines for that in case when someone asks us for a presentation, we can give them yes or no, we can or, we can or cannot do that.
I guess, I mean, are you asking whether?
Should it be put back in there?
Let's take a look. Are you requesting that it be at any council member's request?
Just guidelines in general for whatever council member, when I'm asked or any of us are asked to do an appreciation certificate, you know, what are the guidelines for doing that?
Okay, let's, I'll take a look at that. Why don't I put it forward, though?
Great.
Okay.
I want to make sure that she had the clarity, because that was a little, this presentation, I was, I was presuming someone presenting to council, so I want to make sure she.
Oh, okay, I thought it was, yep. Under B, I think special open or closed meetings may be held at any time and place if requested by any council member and the council president, so it becomes a unified request.
So I think, and I knew this was going to be a question, and so the reason why, and I'll pivot to the attorney if she wants to jump in and correct, but the reason why we place this language is, so the council president or vice president thereof, if, if I'm unable to, kind of determines the agenda and determines the items placed on the agenda and what, what goes and what doesn't. So that's why they placed that, that specific language there, so.
Then for clarification, it would be council president or vice president, correct?
Or the, or the designate, but, you know, I guess if you want to.
Just to, I'm just thinking clarification, that's all, and make, as Councilwoman Jackson just shared, the total transparency of this document.
So is it, are, is council in agreement that they want it to change to council president or vice president?
Or the designee, but, you know, I guess if you want to-
Just to, I'm just thinking clarification, that's all, and make, as Councilwoman Jackson just shared, the total transparency of this document.
So is it, are, is Counsel in agreement that they want it to change to council president or vice president?
We could add that. I mean, I think that, what do you think, Councilwoman Jackson, about that? I mean, the council president does lead the agenda, but I guess, you know, a segue or determination that if he's unable to, then somebody else needs to be able to pick it up.
And, yeah, I agree.
So perhaps if that's a concern, I would, I would say they're designee, because if that's your concern, then if something does happen to both, both the council and vice president, then again, still you would be acting outside of the rules. So I would say that they're designee.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I see C on council member attendance and participation. As you know, I have been very ill.
Wait, you're, wait a minute, hold it. You're going, I'm just on, can I ask something on D, under the, still, under D here is, should we, there were a lot of details about the media, the expectations from the media in the previous document, and I'm wondering on D, under here, under 2D, it says, "The city clerk's office shall notify the media of all council meetings." There are no guidelines or expectations from the media, what they are able to do and not to do, that kind of thing is, that, should that be put back in, or should that be a more consolidated description of what the media is responsible for?
I think what we took at was that they don't obstruct the view, and as you can see from the media tonight, it's a smaller footprint than I think it was back in 2014. And so that's why it was just changed, because the media, they're normally doing it on their cellphone, and they don't have the big camera. But, I mean, if you want that added in-
No, I just wanted clarification, that's all. Okay, three council members.
Mr. Sheil, could you go back to the original rules? Can you point out for the city clerk and I where it is about the presentation of certificates of appreciation?
Oh, I don't, I don't know where it was on the previous one. It was just mentioned. I don't remember where that was. I can tell you where the recent, the media information is, but the old, you know, the certificates, I do not remember where that was.
Okay, well, then, do you have guidelines that you'd like to propose? Because I don't remember there being very specific guidelines for that.
I'm not aware of what the guidelines are. I guess maybe that's why I was asking if it needs to be in there.
Well, these are the council's rules, so that's for you guys to discuss what that would be.
Okay. How would you word that?
So we, so you're saying that we as a council should be discussing this before the changes?
I'm sorry?
So you're saying that we as a council should have been discussing this before?
The rule to be discussed, I think the intent was to make a proposal, so that way the discussion could be a little more seamless, or to at least give a jumping off point for discussion, because otherwise, it's been on the agenda for some time to do. So this was council president's attempt to take a stab with us making the rules or revising the rules, and you can provide your input today.
This was from our retreat, where we said we wanted to make sure everything was in line, and so I know Council Vice President was taking lead on this, but she's had some things. And so again, I know you all, so I know that you all met and discussed, and so this was just us bringing it forward to Counsel and for us to have the conversation and to be able to formulate what we want in our rules of order.
We were speaking about three, council members' attendance and participation. And here you say if a council member cannot attend a legislative session, special session or work session because of a planned vacation, business travel, or because of an extenuating circumstance and desire to participate in the meeting by electronic means from a remote location, the member may do so provided he or she notifies the council and city clerk in advance. Okay, there's been times when I've been so sick I couldn't do a Zoom, didn't want to be on a Zoom. So there are going to be times when we just can't do it. When you're sick, you're sick. I mean, I don't think anybody plans just to be sick or not feeling well. I just think that if a person, and sometimes you don't even know you're going to be sick. There's been times when I tried my best to make it to meetings, I even get on Zoom, and I couldn't because I was just that sick. So I would wait until about an hour or two and say, I can't make it. I just can't do it. So we shouldn't put a time limit on, or say that we should, I realize that we should call in. Now, we should call in. I respect that. If with any job, you have to call in. You do. But if a person is so sick they can't get on a Zoom, I know, I just, uh-uh, I just don't, I don't respect that, because, like I said, there's times when I just couldn't do it, and I don't want to lose my position because I can't do it. And I don't think somebody else should have to lose theirs because they can't do it.
So, Councilwoman Jackson, and again, that's why I'm, so if we read C, is that referring to 3C?
Uh, wait a minute. 3C, yeah.
Yeah, so it says that if they, in a meeting by electronic means from a remote location, the member may do so provided he or she notifies the council president and the city clerk in advance. So again, that's very, that's up to your interpretation. And if the council member is joining remotely via video in order to vote, he or she shall keep their video on during the entire meeting. It's, it doesn't say that they have to, they must. This is just saying that if, if you're unable to attend and you want to attend via, you know, remotely, then, then you should keep your video on. That's just, I don't think it's mandating that you even have to attend or that you even have to let the person know. It's just saying you, if you're able to, in advance, and if you want to join via remote and via video, that we actually keep your video on. But if you want to amend the language, we certainly can do so.
Please.
Okay, so what would you?
What do you propose?
I would propose that it just wouldn't be necessary at all times when you're not-
Oh, so you were asking that you not, the video not have to be turned on at all times?
Yeah.
And I think this just says in order to vote. This is just saying that-
But we, I remember we couldn't vote on Zoom at one time.
And so that, this was the discussion. So I think this is what we need to decide is-
Because we couldn't vote on Zoom at one time, because I was knocked off. When I was sick, I was knocked off because I couldn't, and that was only because, no, when we had closed sessions or whatever, I couldn't participate.
Closed session, we've never been allowed to participate remotely, correct?
I couldn't do it. And then at one, now, I did vote. I can, no, I did vote.
And we have been voting in legislative session via Zoom.
But the closed sessions, I couldn't.
Correct.
I apologize.
So you're good with this?
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember DeShiel, I did find about the certificates, and I believe it said it must be done with the consensus of counsel. I can, we can add that back in if that's what you would like.
I think it needs to be on there just as an FYI.
Okay.
Please. Thank you. Okay, section four, nothing on four. I don't know about anybody else. The only thing I have about section four is feedback that we've gotten regarding cell phones. I know people silence their cell phones, but I think if the, as part of the conduct at meetings, I think it sends a message if the council members are not on their phones and their phones are put away, their cell phones are put away. It's come up, you know, before, and I just want to entertain the thought of cell phones not being available or present during council meetings by council members.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Sharon, but I disagree in fact, because sometimes I research. If a question arises, I go on my phone and I research. It's not that I'm on the phone Facebooking or anything like that. I'm researching. So not all the time are we just on our phones like that, because, like I said, if something has come up and I want to know, I'm going, I'm going on my phone. I'm going to see. And that's the only reason why I think we should be on our phone if we're doing that.
Also, I know that it's good for, sometimes if your laptop is down, you can access the agendas and stuff. And there's also a notepad on there, which I keep notes for constituents who make comments or need me to get back to them or something. There's a notepad on there. You can write it right on there and then attach it to your calendar as a reminder. So, it's stuff like that. It's not, especially if you've got email problems, it's email and stuff like that, you can access it on your phone. So it's another device to access city information on.
And then one time, I couldn't even get on my laptop, the older one. I couldn't get on it. So I had to use my phone.
Okay, agendas. Under here, under A, "Council president shall prepare a written agenda for each meeting with the assistance of the clerk's office." I'm wondering how it could be worded where other council members are informed of things that are on the agenda prior to it coming out in agenda form that has been determined the week before. I'm not sure how you would word that or if it's even necessary to be in there, but sometimes when we see it on the agenda, as Councilwoman Jackson said, if we know ahead of time before it comes out on the agenda, we have a chance to go through and do research, as you were referring to, on the item that's going to be presented.
So are you saying, like, a change to it after it's been published? Is that what you mean, or something different?
Prior to it being published, if the count, the proposed written agenda is shared with the council members prior to the publishing to the public, just as an awareness piece, and more, and more preparation would be allowed for that?
So do you mean for Counsel to be able to provide feedback on the agenda before it's published, or tell me what you're-
I guess maybe my reasoning from this, for this is when somebody, the constituent calls and said, oh, I saw this on the agenda. Do you know the background on, you know, do you know why it's on the agenda? Can you explain this to me? And certain topics have come up where that has happened, and we're aware, I have felt on two occasions that I'm blindsided, because I knew nothing about that being on the agenda prior to it being out there, and then somebody pulls it up and they say, what's this about?
So I think with the, with the changes and everything that, and again, changes is, it's a lot, but all these changes, they've been set in the stage and, you know, so Hannah and Julie, understanding the workload and what's going on, and the new, the platform that we're going to roll out for our city staff, it's going to provide for that to be automated. So, so Counsel will have some portion, and they'll know what items are on the agenda. They'll get a notification, an email, and they'll get the notification for, for when it's being, you know, reviewed by staff and then sent to the public. But then also, you know, the goal is not to be, not to, you know, overpromise, but our goal is going to end up actually that we're going to make the agendas public, so you actually have a working week to review the agenda. And we're able to do this because now we've staggered the, you know, the meetings, and now we have two a month.
Right.
And also, you know, we place, you know, pretty, you know, pretty, you know, workable timelines with city staff to, you know, that if this item isn't here by this day, then, you know, it has to go to the next, the next meeting, because we want to make sure we're being transparent with the public, and they have ample time, and you all have ample time, because I've heard you all time and time again. But if cities, if, if we don't get the items for the agenda until Friday morning, we can't post it until Friday morning. And so, I hear you, and that's what we're trying to do. So we'll make sure that you all have the agenda to be able to preview. If you would like it in the rules of order, I'm not sure how to write that in there, but that's part of the plan, is for you all to review, and I want you all to have that time to review. And that's why we made the changes. I know it's, it's a shift, but that's, it all is working together so that it's relieving some, you know, some pressure from staff, from the clerk's office as well.
Okay, under C on this, and no offense to Sean, sorry, making this personal. The council president has a discretion whether to add the item to the agenda. I don't think that needs to be on there. I think if it's requested by the city administrator, the mayor, or a member of council, I think being respectful to that request is that it should, it should show up on the agenda.
So, city attorney, can you, can you give precedence? And again, this is not, you know, me trying to wedge in, this is just how the council president, if the members who have been on council before, council president has determined the agenda. This has been the way since, since before I held the title, but-
That's not a change, Councilmember DeShiel. That's consistent with the rules of order since they were first passed.
Okay, I'm fine with that. They're just questions I have. You said work session. I took you seriously.
No, hold on one more. Did you have?
Yeah, there have been instances where I think, you know, yeah, putting something on the agenda doesn't assure its success, but having an opportunity to debate it would be useful. And we've had opportunities where, you know, I think that something meaningful should go on the agenda that gets, you know, precluded from going on the agenda, which I think is not particularly helpful for the administration. So, I mean, it could obviously be voted down. I don't think, in the event of transparency, that's a bad idea, you know? So I would, I would offer to, if that could be a modification to the rules, that would be helpful.
You're looking at me. These are council rules, so for them to decide.
You just happen to be in my vision.
I'm just described.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I don't think anything I've put up that's absurd. So it's, you know, it's just one of those things where I think it's probably an opportunity for us to be, you know, again, transparent, so.
Just a point of clarification real quick. There is still that option that if the council president does set the agenda, that someone can make a motion to modify or amend the agenda at the beginning of the meeting to add an additional item that has happened in the past. So there's still a workaround.
Okay, under, I guess, this is something I would really like to have on the agenda, and I can't decide this on my own, obviously. I would really like to have a portion of the agenda at some point have an update, because people ask us questions in the pub, from the public, and then it goes into a black hole, in my opinion, because they don't necessarily get a response. They can't get a response at night, but, and sometimes it needs more research and it's, you know, turned back to them. But I think it just would be helpful to have an update that would include a follow-up and questions answered that are either from our constituents or when, to give you an example, I would love an update on Ann Street, and haven't had it, but it's been on, you know, multiple agendas, but it never gets finished or wrapped up. So by putting updates on the agenda, then you know that certain items are going to be, people are going to be informed.
So that would go back to the last comment made about if I, just because I place an item on the agenda, it doesn't assure that it be discussed. And so I think you're seeing that even if the request is made, and so we have a, which I can share with you, there's a requested agenda items that staff or the press or if you, so when you all send an email to me or to Julie, asking for items to be on the agenda, we put it on this requested items, you know, list, and then we have the conversation with administration, then we determine, okay, here are the agenda, and this is our meetings that we have. And so, so, you know, Ann Street, if I put it on there and I say, hey, Councilwoman DeShiel wants to talk about Ann Street, and if administration says, sorry, that's in March, or that's in April, I can place on the agenda all day long, but-
But it would be nice to know that it's coming up in March. For instance, my pet peeve is Carroll Street, as everyone knows, and I've been promised it would be addressed in January, and that's what I needed to know, that it was coming, then I don't have to keep asking. So it's a matter of a timeline that you're sharing, that these things are being addressed.
I think, Sharon, that's not an unreasonable request, that we can, during our administrative comments and updates, make sure that we hit the high-level points that you want to talk about. If we don't have all the details, we can at least let you know when they're forthcoming. I don't know if there has to be an official capacity, but we'll just add it as a notes for ourselves.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Under six, I'm curious as to why Robert's Rules isn't mentioned in there as, as being a guideline, when it says, "Subject to the city ethics code and state ethics law on two, on A and B," and I think it's, it's referenced somewhere else. On G, I think it might be a good idea to put in Robert's Rules, so we know there are established guidelines.
The city clerk and I reviewed a number of municipalities' rules of order. Not all of them reference Robert's Rules of Orders. Frankly, I know that they're pretty complete and, you know, I think we just decided logistically it would be easier not to reference those, that we would just handle our matters internally. But if that is what Counsel wants to include, tonight is your time to discuss and decide.
I think it should.
So it would be a very, like, if we state that, then I'm going to, you know, go back in my, my old school, you know, it's going to be a very, I don't want to use the word rigid, but it's, you know, it's going to be a very-
Well, I guess my example, President, you know- Well, I guess my example, President Howard, is on, under G, "In the absence of a rule to govern a point of procedure, the city council shall defer to the council president." Well, that puts a lot of pressure on the president, where it could just be, we have referred to a document, i.e. Robert's Rules, that would define, it won't happen that often. But if there is a point in question, that would be the answer.
It would be a template.
Right. Yep.
I think it's just because the gap, you know, you know, because the council president sets the, and this is, again, this is, we're cleaning this up. So this is not, I, the council president, you know, is, they're tasked with, you know, keeping order in the meeting. So I guess that kind of falls under that. But if you'd like to put in there Robert's Rules, I will spend some time, and I'm going to research Robert's Rules of Order, and I'm going to watch a couple of videos, and I'm going to come in here, and I'm just setting the stage that if it, if we're going that way, if it's in the rules of order, it's going to be a very different, not different, but it's just going to be, you know, it's going to be a meeting, so. But if that would provide some, you know, some guidelines, so you know what, what's, what's up next, and, you know.
It just doesn't seem, in the absence of a rule, my guess is it won't happen very often, but it just backs us up. That's all. And I need feedback from council members. This falls on Angela, I mean, Councilwoman Blake and Jackson. Under F, it talks about motions there, but in the old document, there were explanations of three types of motions, and I was wondering why they were removed. Items G, H, and I were removed from the previous.
Yeah, I think because they've never been used. So we were just trying to make it consistent with practice.
Okay, that's fine.
So can we go back? Because I am going to be tasked with revising these for the next discussion, for the next work session agenda. Are, is there a consensus from council to include Robert's Rules of Order?
I think it should be.
I'm, I'm on the fence about it. I, I think.
It could be a template.
It's been, it's been, we've used, used a couple, a couple different models along the way from when I began. And I don't know if Robert's Rules actually are effective with the style that we've been using. So I don't know if we use that just in the absence of something, or if we're going to use it as the total template for the meeting from the start, from the start to the finish. It, it sounds like someone was going to propose it in the absence of a rule to govern a point. And then we're using one style, and then we're going to switch to another style, or are we going to use it as a template from start to finish? So it's kind of like, I don't, I'm not sure I fully can picture how to implement it in that, in that vision.
I'm, I'm not thinking of it in terms of from beginning to end. I'm thinking of it in terms if, in case, once in, you know, three or four years, there comes an opportunity that we don't know how to rule, you don't know how to rule, how to govern on a point of procedure, that you use that as a reference or a resource, as opposed to your full documentation of how you run a meeting, I mean, your format of how you run a meeting.
So you're asking to go back to what was previously in there?
Robert's Rules wasn't in there. Is that correct?
It was, I believe it was referenced.
It was referenced. Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
And I believe that's how it was stated.
It says, um, let's see.
So you want to use it when, what we are using?
When there isn't anything.
To just use that, not from a start to finish?
Yeah, it's just a template guideline.
It's just a reference.
Yeah.
To back up.
To go back to. I mean, there's some things are not necessary to be changed. That's just how I feel. I mean, there's a lot of changes going on here.
Why is the language be prior, please?
Julie, do you have it?
I do. "In the absence of a rule to govern a point of procedure, the city council shall follow the general practices of the latest published edition of Robert's Rules of Order."
Well, when was the last time, does anyone even know when we use that?
I can't tell.
I don't know.
We used it in, when I first came on the council, 2015. We've used it since practically Jack was our president. He referred to Robert's Rules of Orders numerous times. Yeah.
In all honesty, there's a lot of stuff in the original resolution that hasn't been done, used, whatever.
Right.
That's one of the reasons why we kind of took this on to do it, is because of things like that. This is your opportunity to decide, okay, moving forward, what do we want to do and how do we want to do it?
Just leave it as a template. Use it as a guideline.
Use it as a default for when you don't have a.
Number G, that's just, it's a backup. It's, it's to validate, you have a legitimate source to back up what decision is made on how to rule to govern on a point. That's all.
Exactly.
Sounds like consensus to me.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, 7. I don't have anything. Anybody else? The new 8. The new 8 is also the old 8. I have nothing on that. 9 is totally new. I think that's a nice addition. The only thing I would say on that, under B, under budget 9B, "Notice of all budget sessions will be published on the city council website once the sessions have been scheduled by the council president." And I think because we are expecting the city administrator and the mayor to be there, I think with input from mayor and city administrator should be added when you start talking about a schedule.
And they do, right. Right, you all will tell us. It's, it's pretty much, you, you all normally tell us when the budget sessions are going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of included in there. I, I can give either way.
They'll tell us when they want to, because, you know, all the staff, and then we'll just say, yeah, you know, we'll, we'll kind of amend and say, well, people, you know, work during these hours and what have you. But if you want to put with input from, then that's, that's certainly.
Okay, and closed session meeting?
Can, just so that way I'm clear, am I adding that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, 10, closed session meetings. I didn't have anything particularly in that. I think, you know, the guidelines, we're all aware of what the guidelines are for closed meetings and what's, what's required for that. The news, the news section on public hearings, very informative. The only question I had was H, "In order to expedite hearing and allow all witnesses an opportunity to be heard, the council president may limit questions from other council members." I think that if the questions are being presented by a council member, that they should be able to be stated, and hopefully we would not go on it nauseam, so that they'd have to be limited. So I'd rather that be taken out, so that we are able to ask as much as we want, basically, similar to what you've acquiesced to when you've gone back to the three minutes. It's a matter of respect for the person that is speaking. That's my, that's just my thought. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Just put in, you know, they looked at several, and they added this clause in there. So I said, I was like, maybe they added it in there for a reason, but please, and, you know, faults?
No, I got the rest, just that one chunk.
Yeah, it was that, yes.
Okay, 12, public.
Sorry, is, I didn't hear a discussion on that. Can I get a consensus whether that's going to be.
I'm not hearing any actions.